The April 2018 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Secretary, please take your role.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. O'Neil.
Here.
Ms. Newcomb.
Here.
Mr. Paul Metessa.
Here.
Chairman Gattens.
Here. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
United States of America, due to Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with a Pennsylvania state sunshine law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone giving testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of your decision to obtain the necessary permit to start the work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A federal decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Any remarks?
Sorry, Jack, I have to do it. Washburn Street. Take care. Just an update, that's all.
Yeah, I sent them a letter, and they did come and see me at the office. Mr. Abraham and his boss, I forget her name off the top of my head. We did discuss the issues regarding the traffic and parking across the street. They assured me that they were going to sit down with each one of their clients and explain to them in detail as far as the crossing the street situation and not loading and unloading in the middle of the street like they've been doing. And I haven't heard anything further, so I'm curious to see if there's any feedback from any of the board members.
I haven't seen them parking in the lot. I just wanted to know what they said. They're still dropping off in the street, and the lot is still completely vacant.
They did say, well, as far as also paving the lot, they did say that they have made arrangements to have the lot paved very shortly is the way they put it, out of the paving.
Great.
So I'm sure that will be paved very shortly, but they, you know, and I haven't received any complaints yet, so, and I just met with them about a week ago.
Okay, sounds great.
But they did seem to be desirous to try to rectify the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Sweeney, can you attest to the verification of the postings, please?
I, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton, do solemnly swear that they posted the following properties with a notice of a zoning hearing posting. Agenda item number one is Lackawanna County 1360 Wyoming Avenue. Number two is Ryan Adcroft, 181527 Sanderson Avenue, the Irish Cultural Society Building at 1301 Beach Street, 100 North South Road, and Vaughn Buckley representing the group at 617 Lackawanna Avenue. The postings were placed on April 2nd, 2018.
Thank you. Call the first case, please.
Lackawanna County, Mr. Frederiksen, Attorney Frederiksen.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am Attorney Don Frederiksen. I'm general counsel for Lackawanna County. And presently before you tonight, we are here on a special exception request for the property located at 1360 Wyoming Avenue in the city of Scranton. I'm going to, if I may approach, present you with a picture of the map of the property.
Carrie, Carrie, Carrie. I noticed that, too.
Me, too, Craig.
I was gonna make a note of it.
Okay. As you can see, from our application, the property is located in an R-20 or R-2O zone within the city of Scranton. The county is proposing to purchase the property to expand the footprint of the Lackawanna County prison. It would be, this particular building that is there would be remodeled and used as a court facility for the current central court, for arraignments and preliminary hearings that are currently held at the courthouse. One of the advantages to this is, of course, is a major safety issue. Currently, for arraignments and preliminary hearings, prisoners are transported by vehicle, by van or car, from the Lackawanna County prison down North Washington Avenue to the courthouse. Every time you transport a prisoner by vehicle, you know, there's a safety risk of escape. It could be an accident. A prisoner could get out of the vehicle. It could be, you know, somebody could plot to have them escape from a county vehicle at that time. The procedure we're looking to do here with this building is to connect the two properties so that prisoners would be able to be walked from the prison directly into this facility, have their preliminary hearing, their arraignment, and they'll be walked right back again. You know, it virtually eliminates the possibility of escape because they would be in the prison the whole time. That is what we're looking at. The building itself is approximately thirteen thousand six hundred square feet. We are not making any alterations or modifications to the outside of the building, and in fact, we have a rendering. We do have a rendering here of what the facility would look like if the county takes it over and remodels it. Additionally, the square footage of the building, of the property itself, is, let me see, approximately fifty-two thousand five hundred and forty square feet, which is less than twenty-five percent as enumerated in Section 806(c)(3) of the code. But additionally, under the county, or underneath the city zoning ordinance, a special exception is permitted in an R-2 zone for the expansion of the prison. Under institutional, it's for a correctional facility expansion of the Lackawanna County-owned prison, which seems like kind of written exactly for this particular incident, in an R-2 zone. It's permitted as a special exception. We have with us tonight our county architect, Mr. Byrne and Mr. Palumbov. If there's any questions with regard to the remodeling of the building itself, and if there's any questions I can answer for you, I'd be happy to do so.
I didn't, that's not much a question, but can you reiterate how the prisoners are going to get from the prison to the building? Did you say they were going to be walking there?
They're gonna walk them from the prison, yes. They're gonna blow a hole through the wall, and they're gonna have a connector into the building.
So they're not gonna be walking on the street?
They will not, no, no, no.
'Cause I know the wall is there.
Yeah. They're gonna blow a hole through the wall, and they will connect them right into the prison, yes. They won't be walking on the street, no.
I just needed to know that for sure. Thank you.
That's fine, yes. Okay, okay.
I don't have any questions. Can I make a motion?
I'll second it.
Wait, see if there's any comments from the audience.
We haven't, anyone else here that wants to testify in this case?
Nope. Motion made, and I seconded it.
Motion has been made and seconded, and now called for a vote.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Metessa.
Yes.
Chairman Gattens.
Yes.
By a vote of five to zero, your request has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, Ryan Adcroft.
Hello?
You raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's my first time up here.
Okay, relax, we're good. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Could you please state your name and address?
Ryan Adcroft, 801 Electric Streets, Scranton, PA, 2509.
You proceed with your testimony.
I briefly wanted to introduce myself and then invite my attorney, Sean Gallagher, up to speak on my behalf. Again, my name is Ryan Adcroft. I'm proposing to put a sign up on, in Greenridge Corners, actually, two signs in Greenridge Corners. And a little bit of information about me, I own a business in Greenridge Corners. My business operates in the Greenridge Corners. I live in the Greenridge section of Scranton. I'm also a member of the Neighborhood Business, Neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association. And that's it. I'd like to invite Sean up. Thank you.
Good evening. Like Ryan said, my name's Sean Gallagher. I represent Ryan and his company, Bird House Outdoors at LC. We're here today to propose a variance for two advertising signs on the exterior of a building located on Sanderson and Market Street. If you guys are familiar with Tim Wagner Sporting Goods, it's the exterior of that building. We're located in the CN zone, so obviously, we would need the variance for that. The sign that they're proposing to put up is a vinyl sign. It's not any blinking lights or a digital billboard or anything of that nature. It's simply a vinyl sign into the exterior of the building. And we would be happy to have the both signs, and the alternative, we can have two, one would also be sufficient, if you'd be kind enough to grant that.
What's the size of the sign?
It's twelve by sixteen. And there's, I could give you a picture of the building and where the proposed signs were.
You got that, right?
Yeah. It's actually, should be the last page of your handout.
For the variance, if the burden proof comes upon you to present a hardship, what's your hardship in this case that we should approve a variance for this?
Essentially, that my client's just trying to earn a living. Putting a sign up, trying to make money for his wife and his family, his kids that he raises in the city of Scranton, has lived here his entire life, is a taxpayer.
The economic hardship can't be used as part of that, to justify us. I mean, it's, you're looking to come in and put a sign up in a CN, but that section there is mostly a neighborhood section right there. The only thing across the street is a bank, and then going down the street is all residents.
There's a neighborhood, there's a bank next to it, but then there's all commercial properties.
But I'm talking about going down Market Street itself.
Okay, there's a bank, and you're going down.
The bank is across the street.
You're speaking towards.
Headed west down Market Street, it's mostly residential houses right there. And that's where these signs are gonna affect, is the residential houses. If they're on the front of the building, you know, where it's more commercial, it could be a different situation, but, I mean, I'm just giving my opinion. I feel you're taking the signs and you're putting them in the residential section of that CN.
But it's more so at the commercial side. I could see if we were down with the residential. I see your argument there. And I see that you're gonna be able to see the sign from the homes, but, like I said, it's not a digital sign that's gonna be blinking at all hours of the night. It's just a vinyl sign that would have a little light underneath it that we could light up during the night hours.
I understand that, but once, once you start encroaching in neighborhoods like that, they become vulnerable to more and more signs coming into the neighborhood. I just, I just have an easier time if it was on a different side of the building, facing across the street, across Sanderson, towards the businesses that are there more than the residents are, when they come out, they're looking up, and they're gonna see a sign when they look up the street right there. And it's in their neighborhood at that point.
If I could interject, I live in the neighborhood, and also, there's very similar signs on that side of the building as well.
The only sign I see there is Curiosity Shop. That's their business sign, it's not a billboard.
So it's a very similar makeup of the sign?
But it's not a billboard. It's their business sign, just like Wagner's has a business sign in the restaurant on the corner of the sign, they're not billboards.
Yes, so it will be advertising a business, just not the business in the building.
That building used to be a movie theater?
Yes.
Was there a sign when it was a movie theater? Like, I would imagine, you know?
There's a marquee out front, I believe, right?
There's actually, across the street, on Sanderson, there's two, above the, I believe it's a beauty shop now, there were signs there that are painted, but they're so old that you can't really see anything on the side of those buildings.
The one sign, it doesn't seem like it makes much sense to me, the, not the one going up market, but the one like set back, like, that doesn't even seem like it would.
Yeah, so, and if I could interject again, the reason we thought that sign could make sense is, I've owned a digital marketing agency in the area for the past lady years, and some of my clients, one of my clients is People's Security Bank, and it faces their drive-through. I thought it could be a good fit for them. So as their customers are going through the drive-through, I thought it was a branding opportunity for them. However, it's not a very, it's not the high priority sign.
That's what I was wondering, because it didn't look like anyone would see that sign, okay.
So it would essentially be a bonus.
Is it gonna be lit with any kind of lighting?
In this initial permit, I want to feel everybody out, so there is no lighting in this permit. However, in the future, I would, you know, if everybody was for that, I would like an external downlight. Again, that's not a deal breaker for me, and if the sign, you know, was only, you know, only allowed with no light, then, you know, that's still a win for me. It would be a win for me tonight.
Even though this is a commercial area, are you aware, do you know by, an estimate the closest residential property to that building?
Directly across, I believe, it's a business, an office of sorts, but then across the street, there are, there is residential area, directly across the street as well.
So within two hundred feet of the sign? That's, I'm just thinking about the lighting, not part of the.
Because you would have to count the two hundred feet, you would literally have to go through the shop below it.
Jack, right by there, I know there was the old magistrate's office behind there, and then there's, right across from it, I just remember, also, as a kid, there's like a storefront on Market there, too. Like, I mean, it is mostly.
There's an insurance agency there.
There's a.
Right behind it, right? On Market Street, not on Greenridge Corners. It's, I believe, it's the Burnside Agency.
Correct. And further down, there's, I know there's a bunch of garages.
Yeah, there are some residential properties.
So it's more of a mix than it is?
There's several non-conforming uses in that block, yes.
I only ask because you said something about lighting up down the road. That's why I asked about the neighbors, because I know neighbors aren't too keen on lighting signs.
Yeah, so, lighting wasn't super important for me, and it wasn't proposed in this initial permit, so.
I'm gonna go back to the question of hardship. I mean, I'm looking at our regulations, and it's under 111e, number three C. A mere showing of economic hardship shall not by itself justify zoning variance. And if, the only thing you can offer up is to make money, it's an economic hardship, I mean, that doesn't.
Well, I think it'd be an improvement.
I'm not done, I'm, let me finish. That doesn't justify us, given it, I mean, it's in black and white there, and, I mean, the building's being used, and it's being used to its fullest, and it's occupied for the most part, I'll say, it might have one, I don't know if you own the building, whoever owns the building, might have one storefront open, but, so it's not a hardship that is causing any hindrance to use that building. The hardship isn't proven here.
You can make the argument that it would improve the building, because the exterior of the building.
That's a tough argument to make, I mean, that's a fifty-fifty argument. If people that support billboards and people that don't support them.
Well, we're talking about either rather seeing a brick exterior or a sign that advertises something preferably for the city of Scranton.
Attorney, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the majority of the building is not gonna be covered by that, than billboards. I mean, we're gonna look at brick in the front, the back, the sides, everything, and these aren't that big that they're gonna cover the whole wall, so it's not an improvement to building.
Ryan, did you say you own a business in Greenridge Corners?
I own, this is a home-based business, and I live in Greenridge, right off of Greenridge Corners, and I also own a business in that building. It's a digital marketing agency called Tribal Media, which I've been operating in Scranton for eight years.
Is anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
Attorney General, on behalf of Joyce Outdoor Advertising.
Just gonna want to speak into the microphone.
As you guys, I believe, know from being in front of you here, Joyce is a competitor with several outdoor advertising signs within the city of Scranton and one right down the street from here. And he believes, we believe, that he will be prejudiced if this sign goes up, that there's only so many places to get signs up legally in the city. So, I shouldn't say legally, but without variances, legally without a variance, permitting people to pop them up in places where they're not permitted without the variance, we think that'll prejudice us. I should start off by saying that I think there's a couple inaccuracies on the application, specifically number twenty-two. Does the sign comply with all off.
Mr. Alzey, could you speak into the microphone, too?
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Sure. So it's question number twenty-two on the application, does the sign comply with all off-premise regulations? And yes is circled. I'd like to bring the board's attention to Section 712f, subsection 1b, number two, which states that, well, section B, off-premise signs are permitted in CN zones, CN districts, if both of the following conditions are met. The first one says it is within one hundred and fifty feet of eighty-one, a right-of-way on the North Scranton Expressway, or any IG or IL district. And then number two, and this is, I believe, to be important as well, the sign does not abut and does not face east or west Market Street. So this sign is going to be in direct violation of that provision of the ordinance. As Mr. Gattens also said, I think that the bigger issue here is that this sign is not going to meet the requirements of a variance as laid out in the municipality's planning code. This property suffers from no unique physical characteristics that would render it in need of a variance in order to make use of the property. There's a multi-unit building already on there with commercial tenants, I believe residential tenants upstairs. I don't think that this variance would be the minimum variance needed to, if any variance was going to be given for this property, I don't think that this would be the proper minimum one. For example, if there was a request to turn one of the commercial portions of the building into a residential, I think that would be a less, less of a request than to put a billboard on this wall here. So really, it pretty much is, we think that it does not comply with the ordinance, and there is no hardship, so it won't comply with the requirements of the municipality's planning code.
We also know that it doesn't comply with the zoning currently, so that's why we're here to apply for the variance. Simply put, we think it's a good opportunity to have an advertising sign. Clearly, the landlord's on board with it. Again, my client's just trying to earn a living like everyone else, taxpayers in the city.
Are you here, you're just here to oppose on behalf of Joyce?
I am.
And you mentioned something about competition? It just seems that you're here just because you think that they're not gonna make any money if the sign goes up.
That's part of it. You guys have sat through some of these hearings, it's a very cutthroat industry, and actually, it pains me to be here, because I'm friends with Ryan, and I hate to have to do this, but that's the industry. It's cutthroat, there's been arguments in front of you guys in here, it's hard to find spots to get these boards up. That's part of the job. And part of the job is knowing zoning ordinance is inside out, and being able to locate the places where you can legally get these things up, and unfortunately, this just isn't one of them. So we're all for Ryan getting into the industry if he finds a legal conforming location to get a sign up, but this isn't it.
It just seems that the only reason he has against him is the facing the east or west Market Street. Only one of the signs will be facing east or west Market Street, is that right? The other sign is not facing?
That would be correct. And under that theory, that he's a competitor, well, that would be like me saying, John, I don't want you to practice law, or Attorney Penatar, I don't want you to practice law, because I wanna be the only attorney in the city of Scranton.
In order for the variance to be granted, one of the requirements is that the property cannot be used in conformity with the code as it's written right now. And this property is being used in conformity with the code with the commercial building located on there, so I just see no hardship here that would justify the granting of a variance.
I think there's somebody else in the audience that can speak.
Thank you.
That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Michelle Petritas.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address?
Michelle Petritas, and I live at 1112 Fisk Street, and I'm here because I own the Curiosity Shop at 640 East Market Street. And the proposed billboards will be above my roof on the walls, attached to the building next to me that surrounds my building. This property goes around all three sides of my building, and in answer to your question, there is a residential house on the other side of the parking lot that is next door to my building. You're asking how close there is one.
And what street is that on?
On East Market.
That's in the market.
So on my same side, just a couple feet down across the parking lot, there is a home that is residential. Last evening at seven-thirty is the first time that I heard that these were supposed to be billboards. I thought they were off-street parking signs for some reason when I read the ordinance that was posted on the telephone pole close to my business. So this morning, I was able to speak to Ryan Adcroft at ten-thirty this morning for the very first time, and I'm opposed to having those due to the undue stress that the landlord has caused to my building of that building. I had to repair my roof two years ago because of workmen walking across my roof for the building that Ryan is located in and is proposing these billboards to go on. Even though this morning he assured me that they would be using bucket trucks, there is still potential of damage to my roof, and I am opposed to that. So all of that being said, I haven't had the opportunity to obtain a lawyer in order to find out what my rights are, because my building will be underneath these signs. And so I would like at least a continuance so that I have the opportunity to get myself some representation to find out what my rights are as the owner of the property that will be underneath them.
So you didn't get a letter in the mail about this?
No, I didn't, because I'm not a tenant of that building. I own my own building. I own the four square walls that my building, my business is in. So I never got a letter from anybody stating that this was happening.
Jack, should she have got a letter for that?
She should have.
I sent letters out, every address that was provided to me on the application.
Was her address on there?
No. No, and it was also advertised.
He also never, like, came to me and talked to me about it, neither did the landlord ever come and talk to me about it. And my building actually, oh, is touching theirs.
Dan, I have a question. Do they have the legal right to actually go over her building in a bucket truck?
I don't think that's relevant to this particular thing. What is relevant is she is not on the list of affected property owners.
Is there a reason why she wasn't on the list?
Yeah, we named the five businesses in the building, and then.
It's within two hundred feet of the building, is that correct?
Yeah, so I believe there was five businesses. Yeah, so I believe there was five businesses listed.
There were five businesses, which hers was not one of them.
Not every business.
So you didn't, you didn't approach any, you didn't approach any residents with a letter?
I didn't know any of those approached.
Have a letter sent, it was all businesses?
Yes, so these are the businesses surrounding the, the sign.
Yeah, but this business is right there, right?
Not every business, not every business on Greenest Corners, there's quite a few more.
Yeah, there were several businesses not on the list. The hearing was advertised as it's supposed to be in the Scranton Times twice. The area was posted by myself personally with notices-
But I think a building that's-
And the, and the addresses that were provided me were sent.
Many of us who live, or who work in the area assume that the off-premise signs was for parking signs. We had no idea it was to be billboard signs. No one in the neighborhood, to my knowledge, knew that they were actually billboard-type signs that were going up. I understand that they're vinyl and that they'll weigh less and won't require as much hardware to hang, however, they will be over my building, so I would like some consideration. The landlord did not respond to me last evening other than to give Ryan my contact information so that Ryan could call me today to discuss it with me because I, I have other issues with the landlord, and this is leaning-
Her issues with the landlord have nothing to do with my client trying to sign up?
Right, but it's leaning towards there's workmen potentially being on my rooftop.
Yeah, so part of my lease agreement with the building owner was, we, the lease would be, you know, we would be breaking the lease if anybody physically touched her building in any way, including the roof, as part of our lease agreement. Also, I had mentioned to Michelle today that we wouldn't use a bucket truck during business, during her business hours, so, and I can guarantee that, no, none of the people in the installation process would, would touch her building. That's a, I can guarantee it. Otherwise, I'd be breaking my lease.
My point in all that is, is that in order for it to have been put in the lease and for it to have come here, someone could have approached me, and during our discussion earlier today, he mentioned how much time he spent on this, and I greatly appreciate that. However, no one ever approached me, and my building is directly under where the signs are going to be.
Well, you definitely should have got a letter, and he should have definitely listed you as a, as a property owner that's next door to this.
Okay, but if we, if they were to grant us a variance, what would the problem be with the sign above your building? You just don't want it there?
I don't have opposition to the signs being there, it's the fact that there's workmen who are human, and that damage could occur to my roof.
Could, I, a landlord could fall out of the sky and kill me.
I understand, I, I closed for seven months, two years ago, so I've already experienced financial hardship in my store due to the fact that workmen carelessly do whatever they feel like they're doing. And in the last three months, despite my agreement with Ed Mazaleski, who is the landlord of this property, there have been six people on my roof that I have had to have removed from my roof, and they're workmen for the building. So I really am very shy of allowing anything to occur within this airspace above me. And from what I understand in my research today, even if those signs come out a quarter of an inch, they're in the airspace above my store. If that workman drops his hammer, or his nails, or, for God's sakes, a drill down on the ground, somebody needs to take responsibility for replacing the tar that's part of the roof. And I can't say that that's going to happen without some kind of representation for myself. So I would like to at least have the opportunity to obtain a lawyer and discuss my rights with that lawyer on how I can be protected before this gets passed.
I appreciate that, but if anyone were to-
That's all I'm asking for.
...damage your property, we would-
No one intentionally ever intends to damage your property.
No, I'm not saying intentionally, but if-
However, $70,000 later, I owned my property outright and now have a bank loan due to the fact that no one has taken responsibility for breaking the beams in my roof. I know it's not you.
Right.
I understand that it's not you, but I'm very reticent to allow anybody in the airspace above my roof.
Would you be more comfortable if we were entering to an agreement with you?
I need a lawyer before we do that.
No, I understand, but if any damage were to happen, then it's our responsibility to-
I need a lawyer to do that.
Attorney, would you look into table this until this can be worked out?
Sure, that'd be, that'd be fine.
You are going to seek legal representation.
I am seeking, I did, I made contact today but did not hear back from anyone who could come today.
So then I'll, you're, you're not opposed to a continuance?
I mean, I'd prefer to get it done tonight, but if, if she wants a continuance and she wasn't contacted, then that's totally up to you guys.
Yeah, I believe she was entitled to be, to be notified.
It seems like that you guys have already indicated that she should have been contacted, and she should have, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, so that's, we have to table it, let's table it.
Then I'll, then I'll make a motion for-
Well, he has, he has to ask for the continuance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Propose to continue this until-
Until next month, maybe.
Or May meeting. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, go to Jucker.
Mr. Walsh?
I vote yes to continue.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, to continue.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes, to-
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes, to continue.
Chairman Gattin?
Yes.
Thank you.
By a vote of 5-0, grant a continuance, thank you.
Have a good night.
See you, ma'am.
Agenda item number three, the Irish Cultural Society.
How are you? My name is, my name is Matt Barrett, I'm an attorney here tonight on behalf of the Discovery Multi-Intelligence Preschool, regards a property located at the corner of Wintermantle and Beach Street. I'm more than happy to have Stacy Nyvett, who is the president of the school, testify, and hopefully, if you have questions, initially, I'd be happy to answer any questions I could, but I think it'd probably be best if we had her go through and have questions answered at that time.
Why don't we swear in right now, then?
Okay.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Stacy Nyvett, and my address is 738 Taylor Avenue, Scranton.
Thank you, you can proceed.
Okay. You, you all have a copy of the application, including the architectural plans that are attached?
Admittedly, very hard to, to see and understand, so if, if any, did you bring any, any other pictures? I mean, I was over there, I saw the lot, it just, I, I, it's, I could barely read the little piece.
I apologize. I was told, I was told not to bring big ones, that I could only submit it on that size, so I didn't, but I can, um-
I can tell you, if I can help-
I just want to say, I just want to see what the vacant lot in the back, because I wasn't, I didn't get back there, I just drove around, didn't even realize that there was a, a lot back there.
When you say, "See a vacant lot," you mean like the-
The, where she wants it, where she want, yeah. It's, it's hard to visualize.
It's a road.
Yeah, because all I saw was like, yeah.
It's a paper street.
And it looked like when we were driving up there, we saw the postings in a vacant lot that was nowhere near the building, so that's why I was a little confused.
So, did you actually go into the building?
I just went, just into the parking lot.
So, so if you went into the parking lot and you, there's the double gates that open, and there is the, the rear property boundary fence at the back?
Okay.
That is, we are looking, so, the building is here, the parking lot is-
Let me-
So it's, it's just an unfinished area that you're looking at?
Yeah, we won't, let me, let me, we say here, it won't show up on paper, so let me, let me see if I can direct you. The front of the property, do you want to consider that to be Wintermantle?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, so to the side of the building, if you will, if you were, if you were at Wintermantle looking up, we'll call that the front of the building, to the right side is Beach Street, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then to the left side of the building, as you look up from Wintermantle, is there a parking area currently there?
There is, yes.
Okay. And then the park, the property that we're talking about, the portion of the property we're talking about would be on the, as you go up Beach Street, away from Wintermantle, the far end of that building, that's the, the area that we're talking about, correct?
Yes.
And there's some amount of that property that is currently used and occupied by you as the renter of, of the property.
Correct.
And then there is a paper street that continues beyond that border, and then beyond that, I think, is the property of Mr. Valvano.
But the, the area that you're talking about, the vacant lot, is actually, if you, if you drove into the parking lot, when you saw, you see the playground on your left-
Right.
-off Wintermantle Street, and you drive in and you can sort of drive, that rear fence is the property line.
Okay.
And what we want to do is run that fence along to Beach Street and build in that corner.
Okay.
That's what we want, so it's not necessarily a vacant lot, it's, it's an undeveloped part of the property.
Okay. But that, yeah, that's, that's what I meant, it's just, it's just, it's just, okay.
I apologize.
And in, what, what, what other, is there anything else in this building besides the daycare? The Irish Cultural Society, is it just the daycare?
Let me understand, it, currently operating there is a school, a preschool.
Okay.
So it's the, it's a preschool that's operating from there, the ICS is selling, there's currently a plan to sell the property to the Discovery School, assuming that we can continue to get financing and continue we can get approval.
And there's going to be ample parking for these extra children that-
Yes, and I can, I'll try to address that even though it's-
I mean, it is a very large parking lot, I just didn't know what else occupied the building, that was why I was asking.
Let me, let me take you through, so, what, your name is Stacy Nyvett?
Correct.
All right, and would you tell them, what is your role in association with the school?
So I am the founding board president of the school, and we created the school in 2016 because there's not enough preschool for children in Lake One County. So it's a nonprofit preschool that we run, when we were looking for premises within, to locate the school, the Irish Cultural Society, which used to be the John Bartram Elementary School, was a very attractive property for that perspective in that it was originally set up as a four-room schoolhouse, and it lends itself to an educational institution.
Okay, let me ask you, how many students are currently enrolled?
So we currently have 40 students enrolled.
Did you say 40?
Forty, yeah.
Okay. And how many staff members do you have?
And we have six full-time staff members and one part-time staff member.
Okay, and I apologize, it is difficult to read, I acknowledge, but on the, the architectural renderings, there is a reference to the fact that the, the ordinance calls for, I believe, 15 spots for that, and, and I should say, 15 spots in anticipation of 60 students and staff, there would be a need for 15 spots, there's currently laid out 23 spots. Okay? So, we now, you currently rent the property?
Yes.
And do you have an agreement of sale to purchase the property?
We do.
Your intent, if you are successful in obtaining the variance and going through with financing, why would you need to expand the property towards the Blucher Paper Street?
To function effectively as a school, we need more space. There is not enough usable footprint within the building as it is currently stands to be a modern school. And to, there's a critical number of 1,200 square feet that we need to bring into the school footprint to be able to function as a school.
And have you discussed this idea with the Pennsylvania Department of Education?
We have.
And do you have licensing from the Pennsylvania Department of Education?
We do.
And with regards to the plan to address some of the questions or some of the concerns, we're asking for a variance, a setback variance to, we're only going to be at 2 feet as opposed to 25 feet.
Correct.
Have you considered going to another part of the building, meaning, why not go to the rear or to the Wintermantle side? What would be the problem if you were to try to do that?
So if we were to expand down towards Wintermantle, we would have to sacrifice our staff parking, and if we were to expand into the lot that I believe you drove into, we would lose our space for pickup and drop-off. That's how that's used at the moment.
With the, I think the ordinance calls for a setback of 25 feet. I guess, depending on how you read the ordinance, whether it's a rear, a rear, a side building or a rear building, or off a public street, again, it's a paper street, regardless, we need a, we need a variance because no matter how you look at it, whether it's 20 feet, 25 feet, we're only going to be 2 feet from what was designated, or at least showing on papers, being Blucher Street, but as a paper street, it's never been developed, and my understanding is there's no expectation that it will be developed. Okay?
What grades are in this school, is it a preschool?
Preschool and kindergarten.
Are you required to have an outdoor play area?
We do, and we have that.
And this won't affect it?
No. That's one of the reasons we did not expand to the side, was that would impact it.
And you're not looking to put any play area on the other side into the parking lot, which would eliminate some of the parking spots you just talked about?
Correct.
Is it just pre-kindergarten, like, four-year-olds, or is it two grades, or both level, two levels of preschool?
So it's, it's a, it's a modestory preschool and kindergarten, so it takes three to six-year-olds.
Okay. So obviously, there's only 40 children, there's very small classes.
Two classes of 20, soon to be three.
And just so the board is aware, you do not operate during the summer months, this is a traditional school, school calendar?
It is, yep.
Now, there's a deck at the rear of that property, and I discussed this with you. Basically, what you're doing to, looking to do is to fill in where that deck is.
Correct.
Am I right by understanding that?
For the majority, to build slightly beyond the current deck and go up to, two feet from the boundary, but it is already partially built as a deck.
And that ain't going to have no impact on the students coming in, going out, fire-
Correct.
-rules or-
Correct.
-anything like that, correct?
Correct.
I'm good.
Anyone else in the audience have testimony in this case?
Nope. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gattin?
Yes. By a vote of 5-0, you've been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next case, agenda item number four, 1,000 North South Road.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, yes, uh-
Could you please raise your right hand?
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address?
Uh, my name is Stephen Robacher, I live at 11 Loop Avenue in Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Are you going to testify as well?
Yes, he is.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Can you please also state your name and address?
My name is Howard Albom, 52 Oak Avenue, Park Ridge, New Jersey.
Thank you, you can proceed.
Yes, we're looking for a change in the ordinance for 1,000 North South Road, that used to be Master Helco, it used to be a fence, excuse me, a fence company at one time. We're looking to put in manufacturing for soap and dish detergent to where it can bring a lot of jobs to the city of Scranton. I'm a, I'm a native, I lived here my whole life, and it's an opportunity for not only me, but a lot of people to have some nice jobs. You know, it's a good, clean work area. I've worked at Master Helco for a number of years, I was their maintenance mechanic there, and now I'm the head of maintenance at, at this company, which I think God was looking over me when he gave me the job, because it's 1.3 miles from my home, you know? It's, I just think it's a really, really good opportunity for the people in Scranton, and I just would appreciate it if we could get it. I don't know what the laws are, so that's why we, we came here to start this, to see where we can possibly go.
Did you bring any pictures or anything with you? It says building lot location footprint to be addressed at zoning hearing.
Uh, yes, I have.
Really hard, so.
Oh, he's got. Saying prepared.
How many employees do you plan on having at your facility?
Probably right around 200 employees.
That's 24 hours a day, that's not, but-
That's two shifts, sir, two shifts.
What would you say, day shift versus night shift?
Uh, day shift probably 75, night shift probably the same.
So what, like, 200 people are going to do with the apartment, all the 100?
Uh, and if they did, we have the parking, sir.
Yeah, I know the building.
Oh, okay.
I know the building too, it's my route to work every day, I just wasn't, I don't, when there's an incomplete application, it's hard for me to just go in and visualize, so, that's, but I, yeah, I know the building very well.
For the board's certification, this is a industrial zoned spot, so normally, he would be automatically permitted, but there is a provision in our ordinance that says if there's soaps, detergents, or varnishes manufactured, then they have to come before the board to obtain a special exception, the special exception being to make sure that there's, it's within safety hazards and things like that.
I was going to say, is it because of the hazard?
Do you already have approval from the EPA and everything for all your, your-
Uh, we believe that this was our first step.
Okay.
Uh, I've had people over there from air environmentalists telling us what we would have to have, depending on what type of chemicals that we were using, uh, people that came in to border where we would, where we would keep our tanks, uh, what the evap would be coming off of them, if there were any total dissolved solids. We have lined up the people that if, if we did have total dissolved solids, like we had when it was Master Helco, that we would set up our own water treatment center that was on the facility itself and then be tankered out or brought out in totes.
Can that already wait?
Yes, sir, but we have to get the, the, this is our first step. We don't want to take any more steps, because we want to do it right the first time. I believe that if you do it right the first time, you don't have to worry about coming back the second. I mean, that's, well, that's the way I was raised, sorry. That's just the way it is.
Makes it easier for us, too, yeah.
Yeah, so this way, if, if we're granted it, then we can get the rest of the schematics, what the chemical compounds are, and all of that other stuff, we can get the team together, because I'm going, I'm the project manager on it. I can get everyone together, and then go ahead and whatever we have to do, we can take the next step.
Where did, I'm sorry, where did you say your address was?
I'm Eleven Loop Avenue, North Scranton.
Loop, now, loop is what connects Kaiser to North South Road, isn't it?
No.
Is there-
That's Loop Street. Loop Avenue is different, come on.
Okay, I, I only know, I only know loop, because that's, that's how.
No, if you were to come out, go all the way down to West Market, make a right-hand turn.
Well, you don't have to give me directions.
Well, it's, it's just right there, right off like a street.
When you said loop, I just thought, there's no one, no, there's no houses on loop, so that's why I was-
Yeah, there's three loops.
Oh, okay.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony in this case? Try again, is anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
No, I'll, I'll make a motion then.
Second?
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gaddens?
Yes, by a vote of five-zero, you've been approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a beautiful-
Thank you.
Agenda item number five, Vaughn Buckley, Six Seventeen Lackawanna Avenue.
Good evening, members. We are going to hand out some more specific plans.
Could you state, are you an attorney? I'd take it.
I'm attorney-at-law.
State your name and address for them.
Uh, my name is Attorney General Mike Paul.
Thank you. Are these gentlemen going to give testimony as well?
Yes, they are.
I'm glad to see this, because I, truly, I, I got more information from the newspaper on this project than I got from your presentation.
Attorney, before you start, we'll swear them in, just so we can. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Start with you, could you state your name and address, please?
Vaughn Buckley, Five Thirty-eight Leverington Avenue, Philadelphia. Vaughn Buckley, and Five Thirty-eight Leverington Avenue, Philadelphia.
You might want to spell Leverington. It's, I, I, I know where it is, but it's, it's not spelled the way it sounds.
And the next gentleman?
The other gentleman.
Chris Cespico, One Montage Mountain Road, Music, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-zero-seven.
Spell your last name, please.
S-E-S-P-I-C-O.
Thank you very much. Proceed.
Mr. Buckley, why don't you tell us a little bit about who you are?
Okay, we're going to have to use some microphones here, and there's one there, and then, you can, you can carry it around if you, if you need to.
Mr. Buckley, why don't you tell us a little bit about who you are and what this project is?
Sure. Uh, my name is Vaughn Buckley. I'm a modular builder out of Philadelphia. Uh, we do a lot of projects with Simplex, which is our connection to Scranton. Uh, my partner in this case owns the Kildare's Scranton Lot, uh, and the bank that owns the surrounding parcels is in a sale transaction with myself and my partner to sell the, the irregular-shaped parcels that surround the Kildare Scranton Lot, which are currently owned by, excuse me, by the bank.
Okay, and, and what is, the first page of your submission depicts the lot in white, correct?
It does. That's the consolidated lot with all three parcels.
And in the application we submitted, there was a Z-one map, which showed the individual parcels, parcels, I believe, one and three, were two separate parcels, two separate irregular parcels at that intersection, correct?
Correct.
Okay, oh. Tell the panel a little bit about what you plan to construct there, and then we'll get into the schematics for it.
So after evaluating the, the irregular parcels that surrounded Kildare's, it was most appropriate within the confines of the allowable uses for the zoning code that we consider multifamily. After laying out the building and trying to determine the best way to provide both parking and comfortable accommodation, we determined that the irregular shape of the lot sort of required us to create a building somewhat similar shape to what we have here. There are only very few options for how to maintain parking while also providing new accommodation.
And why don't we, uh, you know what? Let's go with, where's the first floor? This map, this page is page two of your packet. Why don't you tell the panel what's depicted here?
So on the, on the lower level of the building, we have a shared community space that'll be used for, for group events or for a lounge, a common area for the building, as well as a gym that would be private for the residents of the structure. Uh, there's a lobby and mail area, egress for the building, including stairs and elevators, and then we utilize the majority of the remaining space for parking.
And the, on this plan is a red line, is that the proposed boundary line of the consolidated lots?
It is the preliminary proposed boundary line of the consolidated lots.
Now, let's look at. I believe this is the, why don't we take a look at this next, would you explain, when you talk about that gym area, this is page five?
Yes, page five.
This is page five of the submission. Why don't you explain where that gym area is in relation to this?
Sure, so it faces Lackawanna and is essentially at the, at the corner of the building, the most acute angle, where the building wraps around Cressler.
Now, uh, let's go to page number three, and can you explain to the panel what's depicted on page number three?
Uh, it shows a typical floor layout. That is the identical floor layout that would be present on all floors above the ground floor. It is twelve apartments, eleven of which are a junior one-bedroom, and one of which is a two-bedroom.
And let's go to page three of this, or four of the submission, and why don't you tell the panel what this is?
Uh, we're looking at a typical bedroom and unit layout. They're essentially typical throughout the building. They may vary in their location in the structure, but they're otherwise the same.
Want to have Mr. Cespico?
Cespico.
Cespico, testify now. When you approach this project, Mr. Cespico, why don't you tell them what your qualifications-
Okay, again, Chris Cespico, I work for JHA Companies. We're based out of Montrose. I was hired as the civil site engineer for the project, and we are responsible for the survey, and we will be submitting a land development, preferably next month, for the project, and one of my primary responsibilities is to design a stormwater management system, which is required, well, let me back up. I had met with Mr. Sweeney and Don King, the planner, and the engineer, and a couple other representatives from the city of Scranton, and it was, and based on that meeting and also conversations, there's a requirement for a stormwater management system, underground stormwater management system, because there's no above-grade possibilities. Everything's impervious, everything's paved. We intend to design the grading of the site, the same, basically, the water will continue to drain the same way, but there's a requirement since the runoff flows to, uh, the runoff is governed by the Pennsylvania American Water, there's a twenty-five percent reduction, so there will be a requirement for stormwater management.
So to develop the site, you have to create a stormwater management system which reduces stormwater below what it is now?
That's correct, by twenty-five percent.
And why don't you tell the panel a little bit about the limitations of this site and the difficulty developing the stormwater?
Okay, well, the limitations of the site are, like I stated, the, the requirement for stormwater management, but there is a significant grade coming from Lackawanna Avenue down, down to Cressler Court. That, that's really not the most important thing right now. What's more important is that where we put the proposed lot line, which is shown on your zoning plan, the reason we proposed it in that location, it is on a preliminary basis, because the site design hasn't been completed yet. Uh, we wanted to leave enough area for stormwater management to reside on Mr. Buckley's property, once, once the subdivision has taken place. Initially, we were going to put the subdivision line closer to the proposed building, but we didn't want to do that because of the requirement for stormwater management.
Why don't you explain a little bit about why this stormwater management is costly at this type of site?
Well, we, we propose to use a system called StormTech, which is underground. Uh, there's a series of corrugated plastic pipes. Uh, it's perfect for this application. Uh, like I said, we're going to be reducing the stormwater twenty-five percent rate reduction from the, from the current rate of runoff, which, which currently goes into Cressler, Cressler Court area. Um, but it is a very costly system, upwards of two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars. Those numbers have to be refined once the, the final design has taken place, but it is a very costly system to manufacture and install.
And does the design of this also have to incorporate the topography of the, of the land, that slope you talked about?
Yes, there's an existing catch basin about right here at Cressler Court, which is our intended runoff point of interest, and the water continues to go underneath the building this way, but that's our intended outlet for the stormwater management system.
Are there other adaptations that have to be made to this site to accommodate the slope of the property?
Uh, well, Mr. Buckley can, can attest to the actual structure of the building, but we intend to keep the runoff and the grading of the parking lot going to approximately where it's going today, so no, no changes is proposed for the, for the actual final grade of the parking lot. Uh, can I speak to the parking lot situation as well?
Yes, that's next.
So, so one of the important things that we wanted to consider was maintaining the existing parking. As you may or may not know, there, there's about ten, ten spaces existing for the Kildare's Irish pub that's in this parking lot, um, and so we intend to actually increase that number of parking. There's going to be parking below, on the first level, if you would raise that up. There's going to be parking proposed, again, it's not, the design is not final, but approximately ten parking spaces below at the lower level, and also the intent is to maintain the parking for the Kildare's patrons.
I have a question on the maintaining of that parking. So the parking lot at Kildare's is going to stay where it is?
Correct. There will be, there will be parking proposed for that. It's not finally designed yet.
So, let me ask you this, is, does Kildare's presently own that lack, lot, or not?
Well, right now, there's a-
Because it seems to be that's part of your lot, your combined lots.
It's, there is a, there is a pending agreement for the purchase of, and/or cross-parking easements that are, that is underway. However, the problem with this site is that considering the peculiar shape of the site, and considering the innate costs of developing a site in the city of Scranton, you have to reach a certain density to be able to develop the site, otherwise it's not able to be developed, because of the costs of just the site improvements here. So based on that, there's a calculation made as to, what could, what could you do with two lots that are basically undevelopable? Well, you can consolidate them when you enter an agreement with the adjoining landowner to be able to accommodate the proposed structure, which is where we are now. We actually have the contracts for purchase, which I brought with me, redacted.
So Kildare's does not own their parking lot?
Kildare's owns the portion of the parking lot that is striped right next to their doors. Um, if I had the application, I could point the lots, but there's two irregular lots that are around it that are currently used for Kildare's parking, but under an informal basis with no ownership.
Okay, I mean, I'm familiar with those, like, ten spots or whatever, and those are going to be owned by you now.
Well, I don't own Kildare's. We're, we're, we're going to, um, do we have that plan that shows the three lots? Have you got that one there with you? I can point them out.
There's owning plans there, right.
There's two irregular lots that we are purchasing. My partner owns the Kildare's and the land with, which is under it.
If I might answer your question, um, the existing property line goes right down the middle of the existing parking for Kildare's, so it's kind of on both parking lots, or both properties, sorry.
Gotcha.
So you're taking spots off of Kildare's parking, though, to accommodate?
Well, according to this article that our very own Jim Lockwood wrote, the, there's going to be parking under the building?
Uh, yes.
I'm looking on page five, it looks like there's space for parking, but it also says that the, um, the building is exempt from parking requirements under the zoning ordinance. Is that because it's downtown?
Which is, which is true, yeah.
Actually, if you look at page seven, it actually gives a better depiction of where the parking will be.
I was looking at five and six, but.
Actually, it's on six-two, correct.
Yeah.
And if, that's the three-D version of what is depicted here, because those parking spaces reflect the fact that the building is elevated and the parking spaces are under the building.
So the, okay, so those spots are really going to be under?
Just similar to the USFNG building, which is now, I don't know who owns it now, but since I've been around a while, it's always going to be the USFNG.
So they technically don't even have to provide parking, because they're exempt from the zoning?
That's correct. Downtown is exempt from parking.
So, so once again, you're taking spots off of Kildare's?
No, I think, yeah, I mean-
I'll answer your question. Yeah, no one ever answered that from five minutes ago. I'm sorry? I said, no one ever answered my question from five minutes ago.
I know, I, let me just, the, the parcel that is owned by Kildare's does not have all of the parking that surrounds it, so when you say, are we taking it away from them, they don't own it as-is. So there are parcels, the parcel that has the Kildare's lot includes several spaces which they own. As Chris mentioned, the, the lot line runs through some of those spaces. Right now, they are utilizing lots that they do not own to provide additional parking, whether it be for Kildare's or others that are using it with or without license. We are providing permanent parking for Kildare's, increasing the amount of spaces that they own on a future land plan that Chris will provide, as well as, for this purpose that we're here for, the apartment building, providing dedicated spaces for the building which are not required.
And just off the subject, the article also states that this building has a target occupancy, which would be graduates of college or recently graduate, graduates of college, just according to the article. Is that, is that true?
Yes, that, that's essentially what we're looking at. It brings some of those people from the east side of Jefferson on, into the west side of Jefferson, which is actually, makes their access to downtown for shopping and other purposes.
So that's your target, but is, is, I, I know you can't exactly pick and choose your residents.
Okay, I can tell you this, uh, I've been practicing here for thirty-five years. I have two children, okay?
Can you just, sorry, can you just speak into the microphone?
I, I have two children, okay? One lives in Pittsburgh, one lives in Chicago. They live in apartments that are actually smaller than this.
Oh, I wasn't concerned about the size. I just, I just, I just, I was just, wanted to make sure that that's, if you were going to try to target those particular types, that's-
And yes, we have to target it, because, one, it's, it's in the proximity of the university, and it's, it's essentially apartments, efficiency apartments, and, two, because obviously we have an interest in maintaining the area, because one of the partners who's involved in this is from Kildare's, and he's certainly not going to want a difficult situation to arise, because his business is right there. So, you know, while no one can guarantee exactly who's going to move into an apartment space, yes, there is a, going to be a process by which these people are vetted before they move into this building.
I just, I'm just, I just worry, because there's lots of bars that are in and around that area, just, you know, like Kildare's- that area, just, you know, like Kildare's is, Kildare's is a restaurant, is that right? But it's also, it's also a bar, and behind Rocky's, there's a bar there, and I just worry about that the...
All right, let's, let's, let's stay on the subject.
I did stay off the topic, I just...
Basically, this beats the ordinance with two exceptions. One is the 250 square foot units as opposed to our required 600 square foot.
450.
450, 450 square foot as opposed to our required 600.
So let's go there right now.
And the other, the other is the minimum lot area, which kind of coincides with the size of the...
So let's set space on the size of your rooms you're offering.
Sure.
How many are going to be at the 450 and how many are going to be at the 600?
The majority of the units are at 450.
How many is majority?
11 out of 12 on each floor, so 44 out of 48.
They will be at what?
450, exactly.
450. So basically, you're going to say 90% of your rooms are going to be 450?
Correct.
So that's a big change in the variance you're looking for, down from 600.
If I could give you a little background as to why we went there, I think perhaps that could highlight why we feel it isn't, although I do...
Well, I feel it is because it's in black and white, that 600 is 600.
So, we feel it's in black and white also. We looked through there, and we were originally designing this because your code includes an exception for 450 square foot units, where the building has six units that are designated for 55 or older. And there was a discrepancy between several parties that were involved as to whether or not that required all of the units to be 55 or older or not. We felt that the code clearly stated that as long as there were six units in the building that met that requirement, that we would comply, and that's why we designed the building to 450. We intended to meet your zoning code. When we met with the zoning officer, we got slightly different interpretations and decided it made more sense to come for a variance rather than to argue your code because you obviously would be the one to decide that.
Could you explain that, Dan?
Yeah, I'm looking for the exception. I know there is an exception, I agree with him, but I'm trying to look, find the language.
In your application, it says four or five stories. Is it going to be four or is it going to be five?
It's four plus one, so four stories of residential above one story of common and parking.
The first floor on the bottom. Is there any possible way in your plans to increase the square footage of your rooms? Because my concern is, we've had developers come into this city and spend a lot of money in developing the city, and they've adhered to the 600 square foot, and I feel that now we're going to get an uneven playing field by all of a sudden saying it's okay to have 450 square feet.
I understand your concern. I would suggest that our initial response is that we thought that 450 was allowed, but if we determine that that is not the case and we're seeking relief here, the reason is due to the shape of the lot. And if you have a look at sort of the angular shape of the building, if we were to extend our units dimensionally to accommodate the 600 square foot, we just end up with this very awkward lost space in the corners, and the building becomes very difficult both to construct and to weigh out to make sense.
Okay, another question on the layout of the building. Where it touches Cressler Court on Lackawanna Avenue, how much room is between, I think it's the gymnasium, I'm looking at there, or the yellow colored room there? What's the distance between that and Cressler Court at the corner? I've not seen a mark in your drawing, Seth.
You're talking about the building setback?
Yes.
It's, it's intended to be, for there to be no setback.
So...
There's no setback required.
Is a blocked sightline at that corner? If the sightline is blocked at that corner, if that traffic is coming through that court, they can't see traffic coming on Lackawanna Avenue?
I can't answer that for you right now because we haven't done a sight distance analysis.
It does come into play, I mean, it's, you can't just go right to that corner and block it, so...
Right.
You're not showing a number here for a Stephen Lookes. In your proposed boundary lines, your proposed lines, are they in stone or is it something that could possibly change?
The boundary lines there cannot change because they're, it's, that's where the two small odd-shaped lots are.
And they own them outright? Did I hear earlier that in the process of co-mingling, or it's under contract completed? What I'm getting at is, can these lines change?
Those lines cannot change. Those lines, the, what this building affords, we were talking about, is that the sidewalks and the access here are sufficient so that a vehicle can pull out and stop before entering the roadway, and they still have a clear line of sight here, okay? When I, when I discussed this, we, we did not have, we, we did not complete our site analysis review. What we did do was, we sat there when we had the discussion, we talked about access to the site, what we're going to have to do to control access to the site, and then we talked about simply that it appeared from what we were doing that there would be that distance, because remember, the lot line only goes to here, and you have the right-of-way for Lackawanna Avenue, which extends to here, so...
That's, I was trying to get that, I was trying to get that right where your finger was originally there. What's the distance?
I don't have, I don't have my ruler, but it would be at least, if you look at the, if you go to exhibit page number two, and you look at the scale of 15 feet, you would see it's at least 20 feet from the corner of the street to the, to the building. So a vehicle is going to have, is going to be able to pull forward and see up that road to, yeah, because traffic approaches from the left, you'll be able to see up that road if you're parked, because I don't know of any vehicle that has a passenger sitting 20 feet back from the front of the vehicle.
Can you just mention something that, you know, another question for me, where's your access to this? Where are you coming in off of?
The access for the residential is from Cressler Court, and it's intended to be a dedicated entrance to get into that parking lot, separated from the Kildare's. And if you'll look at the, at the 3D rendering for your sightline question, another point to note is that the corner of the building is glazing, so although it may be at least 20 feet, and you have that sightline, you also have the glass through in the building.
I just want to make sure, because that, that Cressler Court is a heavy travel area, so I just want to make sure that we're not encroaching that corner, where we're going to have problems down the road with, with black vision when we're coming down that court.
I agree with you there. Also, the trucking, the trucks that have to feed that hotel right there, that all comes into that alley. Now, you're talking a 35 to a 55-foot tractor-trailer going to make that swing, that may end up making a drive-through out of the corner of your building. That's, that's not that wide. You have no rendering with that building right next to it? What, what would you say would be the distance from your building to their building, right at that corner?
To this building?
No, and further, and further.
Here?
Further in, right by the corner of your, yes.
Right up here?
Right, from there to their building.
What's the distance between the buildings?
Right.
It's about 30 feet.
I'd say about 30.
I think if you, if you look at the...
I'm looking for a scale here.
If you look at the survey that was attached to our grouping, I think it's the last page, it kind of shows where the building ends and where Cressler Court is. That might be helpful, even though I don't think it sets a footage to it.
Yeah, I don't see any setback off the court there.
I don't see any footage to it, but...
It scales to be about 40 feet from that corner, from corner to corner.
What's your, what's your setback from Cressler Court itself along the side of that building?
Zero feet.
So you're right on the court? You're right on the boundary line?
You're right on the court until it makes the jog toward Lackawanna Avenue.
There's no setback required. Done, required, okay.
I would like to hear a little bit more about the layout, and again, why there's so many at 450, and I wouldn't be, I gotta speak for myself, I wouldn't be opposed to granting a few of those apartments at a lesser, but you're the majority, correct? 90% at 450?
Yes, we do.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on, hey, I, I'm still waiting, I guess, on those guys to...
Yeah, I think that that really is, is the deciding factor here, is your interpretation on whether or not the 450 is acceptable, and that is why we intended to design the units this way. If it was determined that was not the case and there was some level of relief that you were willing to give, we might reconsider.
Well, if it's in black and white, you wouldn't need the exception.
Which is kind of why I'm hedging, but...
Okay, that's all we're on the same page.
Here's, here's what the ordinance says. Okay, the ordinance says, "Minimum for apartment units shall be 600 square feet except. Such minimum for apartment units within buildings containing six or more dwelling units that are specifically limited to persons over 55 years old or their spouses and/or physically handicapped shall be 450 square feet." Which I can see is confusing.
Understood.
You're not proposing designated, designating that many units? If you're going to med students and college students and...
I would have no problem designating six units. If the interpretation was the way that we interpret it, which is that it would allow for all units within that building to meet the 450 square foot, which is how we read that. If that's not how the board reads it, then we would not offer over 55 units. Our assertion is that the code is trying to incentivize you to create a building with 55 units by dangling the carrot of smaller unit sizes. If that's not the case, then we would have no reason or need to provide them.
Do you have a Plan B? Do you have a Plan B to upgrade the square footage if it gets turned down here tonight?
We probably will not upgrade the entire building to comply, and the reason that I say that is that after going through the site work analysis with Chris and doing the rest of the work that we're doing here, which is one of the reasons why we're here tonight while we're under contract as opposed to having closed on the land, we don't see how we build that building without significantly reducing either the number of units or significantly, significantly increasing the cost of those units if we were to make them 600. A couple of the points that we want to consider here is that we are not required to have parking, but we have made the parking there which has caused the building to now be constructed of steel and concrete on the first floor. So there's just all of these incremental costs that get to the point where we wouldn't build 600.
The reason I started out talking about subsurface drainage and the other issues with topography is because to develop this particular site is not commercially feasible unless you hit a certain critical mass of size. We didn't propose a 10-story structure. When you look at, you know, the feasibility of developing a commercial site, you have to take all these, and if you're starting out with maybe a half million dollars in the site prep work, well, then you have to be able to recoup that, and then because you have to recoup that, you can't make it too big because these lots are so small to begin with, you run up against certain, certain barriers that simply cannot be addressed other than, and believe me, we've been talking a lot about these exact issues for the last three days, almost nonstop, they filled up my email. How do you, how do you pursue a project like this and, in the city? And it appears to be a good project for the city, but it, there are limitations to the site, and those limitations are resulting in developmental costs, which make the project not financially feasible unless we hit certain parameters. And that's how this, that's how we got here.
Well, I always love to see new business come in the city, but I'm someone, I like to always maybe try to help someone and maybe bend, but to me, if you read that interpretation one way, it's breaking, and the other way, you don't need the variance, so I don't even know, I, I'd like to ask you guys where you think that is, on that, that's my major question and concern.
I, it seems as though if they have dedicated six or more dwelling units specifically limited to people over 55 or physically handicapped, then there's room for interpretation that they only need 450 square feet. But they have to, they have to have dedicated, one of these floors on one of these wings, yeah, six units, probably there's, it looks like there's six units facing Lackawanna Avenue, so one of those wings would have to be dedicated to physically handicapped or 55.
So who told you otherwise that, that, that's not how it was?
I don't think it's necessary for me to name anyone in particular, but I'll just say that in discussions with various professionals, there was differing opinions.
Another question is, I would like to maybe hear that again, but it says handicap or over 55, so does that mean three and three, or has to be six in each?
It could be either, either or.
Okay.
Either or.
Are your apartments handicap accessible now?
They could be and they are not. In the footprint that they are designed, we could easily make 450 square foot units dedicated for disabled folks or, or over 55, and we do meet the ADA requirements for the building, meaning that all units are type B, and we have the required type A units in the building, but not every apartment is accessible.
I, I just have a hard time grasping this. If you're going to dedicate this looking for university students, I mean, you're close enough to university, you could probably fill that building up with 48 students real quick, especially what Kildare's right next door. How would you expect someone 55 and over to live in that same building with all these kids?
It doesn't require them to be 55 or older, it was an or-disabled, which, as we're aware, there are a lot of disabled students, so there is a good chance that the building still is students, even while meeting the requirements of the variance. But obviously, I'm not going to tell a 55-year-old they can't live there if they want to.
I understand that, I'm just looking down the road here. All right, that's all I have right now.
Dan, you have to dedicate six of those units to a handicap and not be able to
rent them to somebody else.
Handicap or 55 or older, yes.
Or 55 and over, right.
And does a square footage for those six have to be any different?
No, then they would qualify for the 450.
And that's the way we understood it.
So, why are we here?
Well, because they haven't said that they've dedicated a floor.
And we have two variances.
Yes, and the second one is because of the, your ordinance has a requirement that the lot size be so many square feet.
Per dwelling.
In order to construct the units. When we go to the number of units, we, our lot size is a big enough.
Let me, let me explain that a little bit.
And that was, and that's just a function of the fact that that site, once again, is a limited size.
The ordinance says you can't, you have to have so many square foot of...
500 square feet.
Lot area on which to construct a multifamily or a multi-unit dwelling, such that for each dwelling unit contained in that building, you're supposed to have 500 square feet of lot area, okay? If you take these 48 units and divide it by the lot area involved, you only get 318 square feet per unit, as our requirement says 500 square feet per unit. So that's, that's the bigger variance that they're really looking for.
So Dan, you're saying if they agree to this 55 or handicap, that we don't have to vote on that, we just have to vote on the square footage?
If they agree, and we can make it a condition, obviously, that six of these units have to be dedicated to either 55 and over or physically handicapped, which likely would be one wing on the, the one floor facing Lackawanna Avenue would do it, because you have six, six units there.
Is that what you guys are looking to do?
I believe that the International Building Code requires you to disperse accessible units throughout a building and not group them together like a wing, but we would follow whatever code requirements were, and we could commit to those six units. Again, we're here for relief, we're here for a variance on the 450 square feet. If you decided to request that we dedicate six units instead of granting us relief on the 450 square feet, we would happily consider it. And the overall lot size, if we were able to have two principal uses on one lot, we do meet the requirements, which was another, back to our design intentions, we sized this development based on the interpretation that the entire lot size would count, and we then came to realize that the Kildare's parcel would have to be separated and would not count, so that's the intention behind the variance on the square footage.
Well, I guess that would be up to you, how you would want us to vote, if you're going to dedicate this space or not.
I think that what we would want is to vote, you to vote for your approval, then put a condition on that in accordance with whatever section of the ordinance it was, they would be required to have the six units for handicapped or for individuals over the age of 55.
So that would, that would solve the 450. The other is the, then they still need the variance for the lot area.
Dan, what you're reading there, is that for so many units, like, if they're proposing 48, is that for, any building in Scranton can do that if they're putting six units in a building and they want to come in here for 450 as long as they're dedicating so many that?
That's, that's what, that's how the ordinance reads.
Have we ever, I mean, in my time, we've never addressed that.
Nobody's ever approached us on that, no. But that is what the ordinance says.
You know, I just...
And as Dan knows, if the ordinance is interpreted, it's always interpreted in favor of the landowner.
Such you.
Been, been there.
So whether the, the building has eight units or 48 units, a majority, a certain block of them, percentage of them has to be handicapped accessible?
It says six, it doesn't say a percentage of.
Well, not, well, however, however you want it.
Yeah, it says, it says six, it could be six out of six, or it could be six out of 100.
That's what I said, so, okay, so, yeah.
Anyone here to give testimony to this?
Anyone else here to give testimony to this case?
So let's be sure what we're voting on.
If I could, I would suggest, uh, that we would prefer for you to vote to give us relief for the building in its entirety without the dedication of six units. But if that would prevent us from getting an approval, then we would be willing to make it a condition of the approval that we dedicate.
So you're asking us to approve something without any conditions and then take out your word that you're going to do them?
No.
Oh, no, not at all.
I'm losing what you're saying.
No, he...
I'm asking you to, to approve our variance request as it stands, but if you would not do that, then we are willing to take a condition for the six units. You raised concerns about them, uh, we have some concerns about them, but because it allows us to meet the requirements of your code, we are more than willing to do it if you request us to.
So basically, what he's saying is he wants us to vote as is with no conditions. And if he gets turned down, then he will allow us to put conditions and revote. I think that's what you're asking, is that right?
Someone, although it sounds rough.
This is, yeah, this is a very confusing case. If they say other interpretations...
We don't, yeah, we don't usually say, "No, you have been denied" and then say, "Okay, well, let's change our..." We don't usually revote. So it's better to just put the condition on, that's my opinion.
I, I, I think we're, we're going against everything we've, we've done in the past here, though. Like, we've held, we've held, we've held contractors and developers accountable to, to maintain that square footage and everything over the years and, and now all of a sudden we're, we're interpreting this code a little bit different that's allowing them to come in. And my concern is not with this project, is going down the road, the next project, next project after that, that all of a sudden, I'll say on Pittston Avenue, somebody wants to come in and put a building up, and now we're going to start putting matchbox apartments in, in neighborhoods, in overcrowded neighborhoods and, and that are congested enough to begin with with parking. I mean, it's, I think we're opening the floodgates here.
I, I agree with you to a point, uh, and that's why I think the condition has to be that at least it meets the ordinance. Now, to do it on Pittston Avenue, you have to remember you need so many parking spots per unit, which would disallow that many units on Pittston Avenue. This, this has an exception for parking because it's downtown.
Well, Dan, I'll disagree with you there too, because depending on the size of that unit they're going to put in, and we've been approving backyard parking for everyone, so they could have the parking. But now, now we're going to take our units down to, so if we start at 450, next one's going to want 400.
Well, no, the ordinance doesn't say 400. The ordinance says 450.
Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying, as far as special exception or variance or anything, I, I think we're going to keep hitting a magic number that's, till we appease everybody. I mean, I'm not against the project by any means, i- it's nice to see someone come and develop, but I, I just think, I just think we're opening the gates to something that's down the road.
I, I think, I understand, but I think Dan said it right, I think we put the condition on it and that way it saves it from future, future issues, so...
That was what I was saying, because we don't normally say no and then revote, that's what I said. Just vote with the condition.
I, I'm going to make a motion for the condition.
I'm going to second the motion.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, let's be clear.
Add the condition.
Let's be clear what we're voting on there.
You're voting to add the condition.
Okay, just to add the condition.
Just to add the condition.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Newcombe?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman Gattis?
No.